I will name this. 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 I will name this.
Cassie, are we recording? We are, okay. On behalf of the staff and the city council, I'd like to welcome you this evening to tonight's meeting. This is an in-person meeting here at City Hall, but it is a hybrid. We are also Zooming this meeting for those who would like to view it at home. It is also being livestream on YouTube. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I've asked Councilmember Boldick if she would give us an invocation or a thought, and Councilmember Dave Mon if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to be gathered together today, and we are grateful for the form of government which we have been blessed with, and that we can come before each other and discuss the best way to proceed. We thank Thee, Father, for the mercies that Thou has shown us over this last while, and we pray with all humility that Thou wilt please alleviate this plague of COVID to be gone from us. We also ask that Thou wilt please be with those who are suffering throughout the world, particularly the people in Afghanistan at this time. We pray that Thou wilt help them and that Thy merciful hand will help all in need. In this, we humbly ask, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Do you all rise and repeat with me the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which it stands under God, unity, liberty, and justice for all.
For the benefit of the public that's there, we have recently changed the bylaws of the council that allows for a council member to attend a meeting in a virtual manner. And Lisa Bingham, Councilmember Bingham, has requested that she join us via Zoom. So you'll see her face up there on the screens. Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to make mention that tomorrow is the first day of Hispanic Heritage Recognition Month. And this community has had great influence in it over the years with the Hispanic community, and we love them, we welcome them to the community, and we respect them. So we would take just a minute and recognize them in this meeting. Now, Council, I would take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
I hear Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cassie, that passes unanimously. Council, as you know, Cassie has told us that she has no email for public comment here today. What I would like to do is to begin on Zoom. If there are any public joining us on Zoom that would like to make a comment, if you'd state your name and place of residence, we'll give you three minutes to address the council. So Cassie, can you help me?
I don't see any participants on Zoom here.
Okay. Now, let's go to chambers. Anybody here in the chambers, if you'd like to address the council, if you've come forward and stand here in front of the rostrum in front of us, and again, state your name and place of residence. We have a presentation from the 4H today, so that issue will be taken care of with the agenda. So any other issue you'd like to talk about, we'd like to offer you time to comment now. Hearing and seeing, then I'll close public comment. There'll be a time at the end of this meeting, too, where public comment can be taken. Robert, do you want to report on the drought?
We're just having some technical issues.
Are we?
I had to remove Robert because his device was causing feedback, and now he can't rejoin, so he's...
So it was his fault?
Yeah.
No.
Where's Joe? We lead a little song and dance. Do you want to do a little song and dance, Joe? Okay.
Do you ever feel like everybody's watching you?
Okay, I've got the graphs up. Thank you for your patience.
I want to rotate.
This is a different device, so I'm... There we go. All right. Okay, here's where we're at with our secondary water graph. The blue shows the water allotment that's come in as a water supply. The red is what has been used each week. Now, we're down to our... This week is our final week of secondary water. It'll be turned off September 20th, which is Monday. But so far, our use has been really, really well. There's one week, you can see in past history, a few weeks ago, that was really low use. That was the week of our heavy rainstorms. So we've done a really, really good job. We, when I say "we," I mean our water users, our residents, have done a really, really good job on being responsible for conserving water, and I definitely appreciate that. It's pretty incredible that because of that, we've had some of the best pressures this year, and that's because of more responsible water use. Our demand is not exceeding our supply, which is super ideal, and kudos definitely to our water users here. This graph is just showing our overall year. We're about 80% of water use, so basically 20% water saved out of our... Considering that we were cut 50%, that's really, really remarkable. And I don't think we've... You know, lawns have been sacrificed too much. Maybe I might be... You know, maybe there have been, but overall, I think we got through this and worked through it together. So I definitely applaud the water users here in the city. Well done. Echo is currently at 11% volume, which is low, and we know that, and it's gone down... I think in July, it's gone down about 1% every week, but it's definitely slowed down on the depletion. It was my expectation with how rapidly Echo is draining that we would potentially empty Echo, but it's looking like we won't. It's definitely very low, and the reason we look at Echo is it's where our water is stored, not just Syracuse, but everyone off of the Weber River gets water off of Echo and East Canyon. Echo is our bigger reservoir. So that's a good indicator, and hopefully this winter, we get heavy, heavy snowfall up in the mountains. We don't necessarily need it right here, but definitely the mountains need a lot of heavy snowfall, so hope for that. And we did great. This was a really good report.
Thank you, Robert. Council, do you have any questions for Robert?
Yeah. Can you tell me what the average pressures throughout the city was?
I'm not sure how to answer that question. The pressures vary based on, you know, the location in the city, you know, the higher ends. The higher ends typically get about... On the very highest end is 20 PSI, and that's up at the... Kind of in the northeast area of our city. And then the southwest gets the highest pressures, and they're usually just a little over 100 PSI, 110 and 20.
Delta 80, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
But what's amazing is to think that as flat as it seems out here in Syracuse, our contours, our natural ground contours are... We have a pretty large difference in elevation, which has been really good. Not large enough to where we get steep, steep slopes that we have to deal with erosion or anything like that, but a good enough elevation change to where we can take advantage of gravity across the city.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Lisa and Corinne and I went on a tour of the Weber Basin watershed on the 31st of August, and it was an eye-opener, don't you think, Corinne?
Very much so.
We learned a lot. In fact, I learned a lot. I learned that Weber Basin, before we get our secondary water, actually scrubs our water for moss and algae and other contaminants in the water, and we were able to see that scrubbing station. So we are very fortunate. However, we probably need to pray for a real good snow year. How many of you are skiers? We want you to have the best ski season you've ever had this year. So, Robert, thank you for that presentation. We're going to have you do one more, close out at our work session next time, and then we'll put you to rest.
One comment about that tour, that we found out that historically, when a lot of these reservoirs were built, so I believe it was in the '60s, when apparently Salt Lake County entered the room 10 minutes before Davis County, and so therefore, they have first rights to a lot of our water, and they've been... They take their share still. And so, like, Jordanell is like 75% full. So I think there's something wrong with that state distribution, and it needs to continually be brought up about that, and that's wrong.
Interesting. Just out of curiosity, since I wasn't able to attend that, is there any discussion of additional reservoirs?
They're talking about trying on one of them, but it has to go through all of the environmental studies first, and they're doing some of it, but there's a lot of expense involved. And anyway, it's pretty much just seeing if it's worth the expense.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, our problem really not... Our problem is storage, and so that we can manage through droughts. We're going to have droughts. Problem is that this is a 1 in 100-year drought, so that's what we're up against. Let's hope that we have 1 in 100 years' snowfall this year.
I keep hearing that 1 in 100 a lot over the past few years, as far as storms, floods, droughts.
Plagues.
It all averages out, right?
Okay. Thank you. Robert, are you still up with this water service connection?
Yes, I am. An application came in for a water service connection for a piece of property in the county. The ordinance requires that the applicant comes into the city council to make the request to connect to our culinary water system for indoor water use. The situation is the applicant is Tyler Hamblin, lives on 2700 South, and the property is being planned to be divided. It's right now, there's a vacant piece of the property, and the water service would go to that vacant piece once it's become divided. The current landowner is Lance Hamblin, and it's the applicant, it is his son Tyler. So I can... I'm kind of zooming in here. This is 2700 South, right close to Doral Drive, where the old Hamblin Dairy is, and I'm just slowly zooming in so you can see where I'm at. And so, there's a vacant piece of ground right here, sandwiched right in between Lance's house and the dairy, would be a future lot for Tyler. So before they develop it into a lot, they want to know if they can receive culinary water service for a home.
For the record, that's Tyson. He doesn't have some time.
Oh, my apologies. My apologies. Sorry.
We knew. It's okay.
Tyson, okay. All right. So that's where we're at. If this is something the council approves, I would just ask that it be conditional on the fact that the property would have to be divided before a water service gets installed there, because we do not provide two culinary water services to one property, if that makes sense.
Okay. Lisa, do you want to lead us off?
Yeah, I would ask Robert if there's any issue with that. I mean, even if we're... I mean, that's basically Syracuse, right? And have they had a well or anything in the past?
This vacant parcel doesn't receive any water right now at all. I'm not certain. I believe the existing home is already on our culinary main. Is Lance here?
Yeah.
So is that correct? So the existing house, Lisa, yes, is on our culinary main.
Okay. Then it makes sense to me that we would allow that, and just as you said, if we can do that before, so we're not providing two services to the same lot. So do you have any issues with it besides that, Robert?
I don't have any concerns with it, no.
So is there any action that can be taken on this right now?
No.
It's not subdivided?
I would make a motion that we approve water service to this particular lot, conditional on the subdivision, so that there is not two water services to the same current lot.
Thank you, Dave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Seth. Any further discussion, Council?
Just a quick question. What you've said before is that the culinary water runs down in front of the road, right?
That is correct, yes. It's right in front of the road. So it would not require main extension, just a service connection.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
A conditional approval, I'm good.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't hear you, Lisa.
Aye.
Okay. Cassie, that passes unanimously. Now, who's our 4H spokesman? Spokeswoman? There you go. Do you want to come here in front, and we welcome any presentation that you'd like to have and make before the council?
Thank you so much for this time, for the privilege of being able to present to you. My name is Jenna Aldrich. I am the current program coordinator for Horse and Livestock 4H here in Davis County. I have been in this county for two years. I've been with 4H for close to 30 years. I would like to bring up with me a few of my horse ambassadors and livestock youth reps. They will be the ones who will be presenting to you tonight.
Hi, I'm Kylie Hartfixson, and I'm 13 years old, and I am an ambassador in the Davis County 4H Horse Program. So before we start any 4H event, we always stand up and recite a pledge. So if you could please stand up and repeat after me. Okay. I pledge my head to clearer thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Can you tell I'm not a 4H-er? But I can do the scout oath. How many of you know that the Horse Arena used to be an old landfill here in Syracuse?
Oh.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I remember the scouts used to gather garbage on Saturday in just pickup trucks. They'd dump it into pickup trucks, and then we'd drive over to where the Horse Arena is, and then there was a piece of... There was a trench there, and we'd throw that in there, and then somebody with a backhoe would come in and clean it up. So sometimes when you disc the arena, you may see some garbage.
That's cool.
And it was mine when I was nine.
I may have to start telling jokes.
How about if I ask a question? Is 4H an international group, or is it just here in the States?
So 4H is a national program. It's a youth development program. We have kids that participate in all types of activities. So it was based and started in 1902 in agriculture back in the Midwest. It has grown to include activities such as home economics, STEM, horse and livestock will always be a part of it, small animals, companion animals. Here in the state of Utah, we are... Utah State University is our land-grant university, so we work through Utah State University Extension is where we get most of our programming and such. I will say, though, that each county is responsible for their own funding and their own programming. So we are quite unique here in Davis County. Davis County in the Horse Program has one of the largest programs in the state of Utah. This last year, we had an average of 45 to 50 participants in each of our county horse shows. We just had our Junior Livestock Show at the end of last month, and we had close to 200 animals in our stock show, so we are growing.
Thank you. Are we up?
All right. So you may be wondering, what is 4H? 4H is one of America's largest youth development programs. It has over 6 million kids and over half a million volunteers to run it. 4H is a nonprofit focusing on education and empowering our youth to succeed. The 4H motto is to make the best better, and that's what we're trying to do with our youth today. The 4H Horse Program is more than me riding my circle in the arena. I have to feed, groom, practice every day, and 4H teaches hard work, determination, confidence, growth, and team support. 4H holds practices, county practices, or club practices, once a week, and five county horse shows through the 4H season. 4H also holds education nights for the community members or for the people who have horses and those who don't. The 4H Horse Program is more than just showing. We do demonstrations, public speaking, require written tests before the horse shows. We write cover letters and resumes, and learn about jobs in the horse industry, and focus on community service and volunteer work.
Hi, my name is Gresen Leinberger. I am 15 years old, and I am a state 4H horse ambassador, as well as a Davis County 4H horse ambassador. 4H is an incredible experience for... It's been an incredible experience for me, as it is for most of the youth who are involved. But it's not just an incredible experience for the youth who are involved. It's also an amazing experience for the community, because 4H places of very high importance on community involvement. For the past several years, we, as Davis County 4H, have provided pony rides and worked baby animal days with our own horses and livestock, providing an incredible opportunity for the community, as well as fundraising for our programs. There's also a huge focus on service and volunteer work. Service projects that we have completed in the past were assembling pantry packs, donating blankets and towels for a dog shelter, and assembling hygiene kits for refugees. As for the Syracuse City Arena, 4H clubs were instrumental in the installation of the lights at the arena. 4H has been working and servicing the arena for over 40 years, and 4H provides yearly Syracuse City service projects. These service projects have included Christmas for a family in need, painting the fences at the arena, weeding the arena, assembling and delivering city picnic tables for Syracuse City, riding in the Syracuse Heritage Days Parade, and more. Here are some pictures of the service projects we've completed for Syracuse City that I listed before, and we completed these to help pay for some of the rental fees of the Syracuse City Arena. Here's more pictures. These are of us riding and hanging out at the Syracuse City Arena as we do weekly every single year during the 4H season.
Hi, I am Lexi Beckstead, and I am a Davis County Horse 4H Ambassador, and I am also a 4H livestock member.
Hi, I'm Courtney Hamblin. I am your hog youth rep. I am 15 years old.
Okay. So I'm going to tell you just a little bit about the Davis County 4H Livestock Program. In the livestock program, participants can raise goats, pigs, steers, bunnies, chickens, and sheep. We host education nights to help teach the importance of agriculture and providing food for the community. We focus on the training, grooming, feeding, financing, safety, and quality care of animals, and we teach hard work, determination, team support, and the importance of service and volunteer work. Now, this is more than just a livestock show. We also require cover letters and resumes, and we teach community events and demonstrate sportsmanship. And the number one most amazing thing about the Davis County Livestock Program is that we have donated over 1 million pounds of meat to the Utah Food Bank. These are programs that need and deserve our community support. These are programs that need and deserve our community support. And just a small fun fact, the two little girls on the right are my sisters with their 4H project goats.
What can you do to support and help? We need arenas to practice in safely. We pay, we use, and we're providing service to help pay for the arenas. We've already lost so many spaces. Please allow us to keep using the Syracuse Arena. This is the last city-owned arena in Davis County. What can you do to help? Good dirt is essential to safety. We need an arena worked often and watered correctly for the safety of our riders and horses. We can't provide any events or practices if it's just panels in a field. Just like baseball players need good diamonds with hard, clean dirt between bases. Soccer players need good grass with no weeds, no gopher holes, so no one turns an ankle. Horsemen need safe, soft, deep dirt to practice and show safely.
We have amazing connections through our community education nights and would facilitate any training for parks and recreation for dirt prep, which could help with rental groups. The 4H Clubs in Davis County are growing. We have had the highest numbers this year in almost five years with 110 participants and enrolled volunteers in Horse 4H and 80 participants in livestock. This means approximately 200 families are involved. Taking away from facilities from a program like 4H would be like cementing in a local high school football field, essentially canceling the program for our county. There are many other family members that also use the arena for open rides. Adult Riding Club, Junior Posse, Sheriff's Mounted Posse, Team Roping Club, et cetera. With proper understanding of rentals and good maintenance of the arena itself, the Syracuse facility could see more community use and support. What other help do we need? The Davis County Livestock Show is selling at historically low prices, which hurts the program and keeps people from participating. It shows a lack of support from our counties and cities as well. We would love donations or boosts for our livestock show, allowing opportunities like animals to sell for more to be donated and resold, given to the Utah Food Bank, and for 4H members to cover the cost of raising their animal.
Talent is everywhere, but opportunity is not. The Syracuse City Riding Arena is the last city-owned arena in Davis County. Please allow Syracuse to be the last city in Davis County that honors our agricultural heritage. Are there any questions?
Corinne, do we want to begin with you?
I appreciate your presentation. That was awesome. And I love how you laid out your reasons for keeping it. And personally, I think that we can figure out another place for a BMX place. And we have lots of land. It's a matter of finding where to put things. So we'll figure this out.
Any other questions, Council?
Just a great job. I mean, looking at your ages, I'm like, holy cow, very impressive. I would not have been standing there. I'd be doing not good things at your age. So I appreciate you guys coming forward. Great job.
Lisa, David, Jordan?
Kudos. I went down there and looked at the arena. It looks like we have some work to do. But at the same time, thank you for all you're doing to help keep that arena an asset to the community, both in our city and in the county itself.
David?
You know, I've been very supportive of your cause. I don't personally use it, and I've admitted that freely. I wouldn't put myself on a horse. That would be cruelty. And I haven't, you know, raised anything literally in a long time. But I do have connections to your field, and I would be happy to help where I can. So I let your advisors know. I happen to know Ms. Rodeo Utah, and she's a friend. And if you ever need a speaker or something, I have friends that you've competed against from other cities. So they probably know you. I don't, but you know, that's okay. I think what you do is wonderful. I'm glad it's still here. I'm glad it's still in Syracuse. I think Syracuse is a great place for it. Yeah, but again, I've never had an issue with this.
Lisa?
I think it's wonderful that you have this recreational outlet. And it's really true that there are a lot of different. Everybody likes to do different things. And sometimes we tend to pigeonhole what the youth sports are or the things that we tend to see the majority of our kids doing. But I love that horse riding and the 4H Program that really facilitates this. I love that we have such a stronghold here in this city and would love to see it continue and strongly support that. And I appreciate you getting involved. We've received a lot of letters from people. And you know, sometimes rumors get ahead of truth and whether something was going to happen or not. But it's always nice to hear from our citizens when there really is a concern that a need is not going to be met or that something's going to be shut down that's really crucial to you. So thank you for getting involved. Thank you for showing us what it actually is that you enjoy and are part as a city.
Thank you. Now, I have one question for all of you. How many of you heard of the Australian series MacLeod's Daughters? Can you raise your hand? There's one.
I have no idea. Say that again.
Did you make that up?
No.
Yes.
It's streaming on Tubi. It was a television show in 2001 to 2009 in Australia that was about a girl's, a bunch of girls running a horse ranch. You need to watch it. You need to watch it.
Very cool.
My wife and I are absolutely enthralled. And in fact, before I came here, I watched an episode of MacLeod's Daughters. Look it up, it exists.
I saw a man from Snowy River. Does that count?
Yeah, that counts.
Not really.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, gals. We really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
And I think the next item will make you happy, too. Okay. Council, I would like to ask you. You know, I have to ask permission to send something to the Parks Advisory Committee. So I would like to ask permission to send the BMX track to be studied by our Parks Advisory Committee with the notation that they not consider the Horse Arena. That if they can find a location locally where that might be run, that we will support both, but we don't want to sacrifice the Horse Arena. Is there any objection to that?
So moved.
I have a motion by Corinne. Do I have a second? Second by Seth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That seems unanimous. So that Horse Arena will stay. And David, do you have any last words on that?
No, I'm just surprised we never voted to move it. Since the beginning, when BMX came in, I said, why does this have to conflict with any other place?
Right.
Yeah.
It doesn't need to, and clearly that's now.
So be careful in the rumor mills. You know, everyone here supports that, and we understand that that happens. But we love, we love horse people. And we're going to change some ordinances. When we organized the Parks Advisory Committee, we had no one from the horse community apply to be on that committee. Now, no one, no one in the city had interest in that. We are now going to change the ordinance that governs that and allow an alternate. And Mrs. Jackie O'Shea is going to be appointed as an alternate. As an alternate, as an alternate to that committee, that when there is a vacancy and that committee is based on geography in the city, as soon as there's a retirement from somebody in the sector that she serves, then she will be a full voting member. But she will voice your concerns tomorrow night with the Park Advisory Committee about saving the Horse Arena. And now they've been instructed not to consider it. So thank you for coming. Council, can we move on to the approval of the minutes? We have the minutes of July 27, 2021, the work session. We have August 10, our Truth and Taxation Hearing. And we have the August 10, 2021 Business Meeting. Did you see anything that needed to be corrected in those minutes? No?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Seth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Cassie, those are accepted minutes. These are also my items, and we'll address them one at a time. I am proposing with Resolution R 2143, reappointing Christopher Weaver to the Syracuse Arts Council. Is there any discussion? I entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Dave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Seth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cassie, that's unanimous. Let's go to Item B, Proposed Resolution 4R 2144, Appointing Kenneth Hallowell to the Syracuse Planning Commission. Any discussion? I entertain a motion.
Motion.
I have, I hear Jordan first. Do I have a second, Seth?
Sure, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then as an alternate to the Planning Commission, James King. Resolution 2145, appointing James King to the Syracuse City Planning Commission as an alternate.
So moved.
I have a motion by Seth and a second by Corinne. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Again, that was unanimous, Cassie. Okay. We have a consent agenda. And I've asked, is it Paul or Brody? Which one of you want to take this? Brody, will you take this and bring the public up to date on what we're talking about? We have discussed this in a work session, and therefore we've placed it on consent. But would you help us understand what's going on here?
Sure. Item 9A is a proposed ordinance pertaining to noticing of land use hearings. The state legislature no longer required notices to be in the newspapers. Newspapers are becoming a less effective means of getting notices out when we have all kinds of other methods at our disposal, including the website, the state's public notice website. It still does require us to send physical notifications to affected landowners and then also post a physical advertisement in three areas in the city. So between all of those methods, and we've been doing those anyway, but this would make it so that the newspaper, which is, it does cost cities a fair amount of money to post in the newspapers as frequently as we do. That's no longer required. Item 9B is a memorandum of understanding with the state Department of Workforce Services for water assistance. This is a program that they have in place. They're using ARPA money to fund it. And it's very similar to the heat program, which is financial assistance for those who demonstrate the ability or the lack of ability to pay their utility bills. This one is specifically for water bills. The state will, if they qualify, the state will send a check on their behalf to the city to pay for their water.
Okay, thank you. And again, the council has discussed this in a work session, and we feel to put it on a consent agenda, unless there's one of you that would like to remove one or the other from the consent. Hearing that, I didn't entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
I have a motion by Dave. Do I have a second? Second by Jordan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Lisa, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I'll yell it.
That's also unanimous. Let's go. Noah, are you here? Where's Noah? This is an ordinance amendment, so Noah?
Okay. This is actually a rezone. Talking to Item 10, right?
Yes.
So Bluff Road, it's a small piece of property. They would like to build some houses. Any questions?
Jordan, do you have any questions?
No, I think we reviewed this. I still think we're creating an island in our one zone.
Any other?
Which direction are you going?
Me?
I'm asking there.
I'm going down to you, Corinne.
Okay. Well, as far as I was looking at the, this proposal versus the last time we saw this, and there's seven lots last time and six lots this time. And according to what I can tell, four of them actually fit the R1 zoning for square footage. And one are two and one are three. So I don't really think, because of the nature of the size of these lots, it's infill. The angle of Bluff Road plus connecting to a previous stub road, and the road has to be a certain width, it's going to dictate that these lots are of unusual size and shape anyway. And I believe that the efforts to make these lots as large as possible has been looked at. And they've been honest in doing that. And I don't see a problem with why, you know, a couple of them being a little smaller is an issue here.
Thank you, Dave.
Well, I think in our work session, we saw very clearly that the need to change really just comes down to squeezing in one more lot. And.
But that was a seven lots proposal, sir.
And I don't know that setting a precedent for creating island zoning so that we can squeeze in one extra lot is really the best interest of the city long term. Because then it will become a precedent of every time we can squeeze one more in to fill in the space, that will be the application is to put an R3 in the middle of an R1 or somewhat something similar. And so I think this is a bad precedent to set.
We could work it to R2. I think I could, right now, two zones change.
Yeah.
But with.
I agree.
But with the prescribed shape of the lots, and if we can show that, Noah, that would really help.
I can see it.
Oh, you can see it. Great, good. Then you can understand that the width of these is kind of preset. The depth is preset. The width of the road that has to go there is per ordinance. Bluff Road is at an angle as well. You're either going to create a really, really large, large lot.
Like the ones on the other side of the road?
But those are like pre-existing homes that have been there for a long time.
But they fit the zone.
No, wait. On the other side of the road, what do you mean?
Understanding and disagreeing are two different.
Those two, yeah. See, there's four of them that fit the R1. One's R3 and one's R4. Or excuse me, R2, R3.
I could totally support this.
Is there any possible way to do that? Or is that not going to work?
We're talking about a precedent that says.
I mean, obviously. Oh, shush. My phone was answering for us.
So.
She tell you to look at the internet?
So you guys are in charge of the zoning map. It's a legislative function of the city council. So you could change the zoning to whatever you want to. The application is to change, of course, to R3. I should have clarified that we are not approving any layout tonight at all. That would come in the future. So I know that we've had some conversation about how that would be and how many lots and all that. But you're right, that the intent is there.
So they would not have to go by this. They could do as many as.
That's right. They could then change it again to make even more lots because the new zone allows for that. So it wouldn't be just an exception of what we see today because there's no commitment to what we see today.
There's no commitment to what you're seeing there. That was just for illustration purposes. But the current zoning is 12,000 square foot lots. Proposed zoning is 8,000 square foot lots. So if you guys feel the 8,000 square foot lots are not appropriate in this area of the city, you know, that's an option to not allow it. If you wanted to do R2, that's a 10,000 square foot lot. Planning Commission looked at this in depth, and they evaluated whether or not this would be appropriate in the area. And they're recommending approval because the difference between R3 and R1, it's not like they're going from, you know, they're not doing townhomes or teeny tiny lots. But I understand the principle that you bring up, and that's up to you guys. If you don't like the idea of them getting an extra lot, just by the principle, I mean, that's totally up to you.
It's not about one lot.
There's another point, though, about this, is that right across the way from this, where that street comes to a corner, the homes across there on 3,000, there are three. So essentially, it's, you're going to have the parking right in between after the West Davis Quarter is finished.
This isn't about one lot. It's about a precedent that we set for all applications of this kind.
But it's all being considered individually.
Seth, let me, let me hear from you, Seth.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm, I'm a little bit back and forth on this one because I, I do understand, I guess, the precedent of just, you know, at any point being able to petition and say, hey, it's been done before, right? It's, if we've done it before, we can do it again. This idea in and of itself doesn't give me any issues, but again, this isn't a layout that we've approved. Is the applicant here today?
They haven't been, one of them texted.
They were here in planning commission. This is a very small piece of property. My, I suspect that maybe they thought that they were done. I don't know.
Comfortable, you know, looking at it if this was the, so worst case scenario, if it goes full standards of R3, it looks like based on the acreage, they could get nine lots is the math I'm doing.
If, if you just divide it out by
By four acres.
Yeah, it doesn't always.
I'd like to finish my point. If I could do that without being interrupted. The concern that I have is exactly what you just brought up, Seth. And that is that if the math allows them to do something different, then when the application returns, they can. And we have seen that before in the city where an application came forward with maybe 19 lots and suddenly it became 26.
Where at?
Because that would be right next door to City Hall.
Where? I mean, and how? But Jackson Court, how, how many, honestly, was it changed to?
I think they added six lots.
I don't know. Noah, do you know the history on this?
Zoning change and
I don't remember.
And so the bigger the lot, the more that has an effect.
I know.
Small and we could say that that won't be a huge impact because it's small. But it also sets a precedent that when applied to five acres or 10 acres can be dramatic.
I don't think that that's the case on Jackson Court, that it didn't, they didn't add a whole bunch of extra lots. We actually insisted about a lot of different specifications with Jackson Court and they had to comply with all of them before we approved it. And we individually said this is okay and approved it.
No, we, we did go through the, okay, there's public record. I'm not going to debate what it was. People can look that up. I was present at the time and I know that there is a large change in the density because they gave us one plan at zoning application and a completely different plan when, that led to all kinds of other discussions after they already had zoning. So my concern is that we should not set a precedent for continuing to change zone that will allow for that to continue to happen.
As each of these are considered individually, I don't understand your fear of precedence. If it's appropriate for the size, the shape and the place. But, you know, you
So my, my thoughts are I do, I mean, the, the general concept works for me. I don't have an issue there, but I would like to speak to the applicant to feel comfortable with that's the direction they're going, that or smaller. Because like Corinne said, we do still have legislative authority to deny or approve a zoning change. And so yet it would set precedent that it could be done in other cases, but they'd have to have a strong case to say these meet similar.
But the process has been changed. So if we change the zoning, that doesn't necessarily mean
How is the process being changed? They have to apply for it each time?
What process?
Okay, the process in that we changed the zoning here, the new application for a different layout will then go to planning commission under the consideration
That's not
Now a different zone.
That's not your argument for precedence. That's what we're asking about.
My concern, if I can tell my concern about, the issue we have is exactly what you said a moment ago. Is if this goes to R3, each of the neighbors will, can then apply saying, well, my neighbor's R3. Because we just tried to do that across the road, even though it's R2. And so I, I, I am comfortable with R2 because that is both what is across the street and it's only a single zone change from what it is currently. But going from R1 to R3, the precedent sets is every single neighbor could then apply for the same thing under the same criteria of, well, my neighbor already has that.
So along those lines then, what would R2 look like for, for this layout? Noah, do you have an idea of what, I mean?
And one of the bigger lots would be smaller and one of the smaller lots would be bigger. Probably be very similar to what it is already.
The, so we have a few different controls on what, on the different zones affect how the development will lay out. But in this circumstance, it's very subtle because there's not a lot you can do. There's basically a road down the middle and lots on each side. The biggest difference is the lot width and the lot size. So R2 is 10,000 square feet and R3 is 8,000 square feet. And the lot width for R3 is 80 feet. And the lot width for R2 is 85 feet. So I don't know how many lots that yields. That's not what we're doing right now.
Let me, let me see if I can bring us to a point of unity. How many of you be okay if we change the zone from R, from, from R1 to R2?
We haven't heard from Lisa yet.
I know, but
I would be, well, I would do the R2.
I know that's not before, so we could table this tonight, but what, just
Yeah, I would like to table it.
Table it.
Ask the applicant to reconsider.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That, that sounds like a denial and they could come back with
Oh, he's online, it sounds like.
Hi, I am here.
Has he been muted the whole time?
Yeah, I have been muted the whole time.
Go ahead. Will you state your name and?
Jason Harward. And we did change the, the plot plan just a little bit after the last meeting. We eliminated one of the lots to make them with a minimum 85 feet across the front on each of them. So we eliminated the one lot. With the way that the shape of the land goes, we pull back up the plot plan. But lot one would be in that R2 zone with an extra 1,200 square feet on it. Lot two is the one that is the R3 and it's shy of 350 square feet. The reason why we, that is because it didn't make sense to extend it just a few feet into lot three and then have 46 additional feet in the back and just have a little sliver just to get that lot 350 square feet. If that's what needs to happen to get to an R2, if that's what needs to happen, we can adjust that line and lot two will have a sliver of land that goes 46 and a half feet back by two feet wide or three feet wide. That gets inside the square footage for an R2.
I don't think that would be
Doesn't really make sense. But if that's what needs to happen to get to an R2, then we can make that adjustment real simple.
Lot that is there.
I don't think that shaped lot is even approvable, is it?
It's pre-existing lot lines, property lines, is what he's having to work with.
And both of my neighbors in the very first zoning, rezoning and actually asked to be on record state that they did approve it because we did everything that when they first saw our concept, they were unhappy with it. We took it all back to Ensign, had them redraw it all. And they, they actually showed up to the meeting, wanted to be on record that they were for this. Because we've done everything we could to please the neighbors on all sides and every direction.
Well, having heard what we're dealing with then on that, between the R2 and R3, I, it doesn't make sense to, to try and force that one lot. So I, I am, I, I would be fine to approve this for R3. Knowing that going forward from this point, do we still have the final say once we see the actual lot sizes?
That would go to the planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah. Paul, help us legally here. What could we do? You know, we can't have an R3 lot in an R2 zone.
No, yeah, you can't have an R3 lot. Yeah, so you have, there are those minimum dimensions in the 10,000 square foot lots at 85 feet width. But that's required for anything that's in the R2. So you can, you could approve an R2, especially if the applicant says that they would, that they're okay with that. So you, you don't have to send it back to the commission. The state code allows you to accept or modify or reject a planning commission recommendation. So you're, you're allowed to, to make that decision if you want. But, but yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to allow a lot that's not compliant in that zone. That wouldn't be
I'd like to address the applicant. Would you be happy with an R2 zone and come back with a different drawing to the planning commission?
Yeah, I can make that adjustment. Lot number one has an additional 1,200 or an additional 1,255 square feet, but then it doesn't give it 85 feet across the front edge. How much is needed on an R2 for front edge?
You could cut it enough at a diagonal and get it.
So apparently they want you to cut that at a diagonal to the west so that the other lot too would have more square footage.
That other one doesn't open wide. It just goes straight back. Yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Let's just take this line just. Okay, I can make that work.
Okay, all right. Since, since the applicant can make that work, I'd, let's change the motion to R2.
I'm, can we do that?
Wait, can we do that?
The application is not for that.
Yes, you're permitted to change the zoning to whatever you want and the city could initiate its own zone change if it wanted to. So it's for you.
I mean, not a motion from this table, but an application.
So the applicant's asking for a zone change. You, I mean, no, the, the state code says that you've received a recommendation from line commission and you can modify that recommendation. You don't have to follow it. So yeah, you're not limited by just what the applicant's asking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, then, if, if we're kosher here, I'll go ahead and motion to approve ordinance 202125, meaning Syracuse sitting zone map from R1 and changing it to R2 related to property located at 1343 South Bluff Road. Did I?
With the approval of the applicant.
With the approval of the applicant.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
I would
Say that's a friendly amendment.
To be able to see that. I mean, we have the, we have the ability to ask, to table this and ask, see what that would look like that we're approving.
We don't, for a zone change, we don't really get to see. We, like, they provide courtesy.
Yeah, that, that would be the point because we're not going to see this. And so even if we describe it, what says that, who's going to determine that what we asked for happened?
I don't, as long as it meets R2, I don't think we get any more say than that.
That's my point. So I would rather see it first so that I understand what the application looks like.
Motion and a second has been
I have a, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Dave? We understand your concern. Any other discussion?
I, I think that would be, the, the problem would be it would just be conceptual again, speaking back.
Lisa, are you good with the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Dave.
Okay, Dave is voting against that one. Cassie, all right, thank you. Let's go on. Cresta. Can you talk to us about a park maintenance facility?
Hi, guys.
Hello.
As you guys know, we've been working towards a park maintenance facility for many years. But we're in the design process right now and we've been working on that for the past seven months or so. Rick Espinoza is here to go over some of the designs, drawings and designs, and then we'll go over the cost estimate when we're done with that. I will say that we started out rather big. We did five bays and we have scaled it back down to three, which would be two bays and a wash bay and then just some little outer buildings and things. So we have already looked at ways that we could, could cut, so.
Well, you know, when you mentioned that, just while he's getting set up.
Yeah.
Having been a part of building other similar facilities for like a sewer plant, you know, when we're talking about bays, as long as the land is there, extending on at a future date is not, is cost effective.
Right.
It's a way to keep costs down initially, so.
It looks like you
Right, and that's what we, we had said when we were talking about it.
Thrilled with that as a plan as opposed to overspending at the time that we don't have the money.
Right. So we have been conscious about that, just so you guys
I appreciate that.
And I'm going to turn the time over to Rick.
Ready?
Yeah, you're right. We're ready.
Sorry. So we started, my, Rick Espinoza with JRCA Architects.
Can you pull that microphone over a little closer to you for those people on Zoom? The one that's right in front of you?
I'm Rick Espinoza and I'm with JRCA. I've been working with the Parks Department for probably four months, four or five months. And I'm going to walk you through our process. We started with schematic design. And we are here you have the, where we are right now. When we started schematic design, this building was actually a five bay vehicle maintenance. It extended out to the, here. And we had about twice the size for our chemical storage area, which was out here. This project is located just north of the Public Works and just north of the Equestrian Park. And this is the site that we have along 2400 West. There's a residential development going on to the north and to the west. And there's some property that we're going to try and annex onto this property as you'll see when I get to the site plan. So the initial size of the project came in over budget. So that's why the project that we see now only has three vehicle maintenance bays and we've cut the, the chemical storage in half. We did what we could. We have that access road that goes through to the east. And we, we were not paving the back of the lot. We're just using crushed gravel from the Public Works Department. So there's things that we've done. When Cresta gets into the cost estimate, you'll see where we're at. So here's our site plan. So this is 24, this is 2400 West. And we have that new UDOT road that's going through to development on the east side of the property. We've provided public and employee parking here. We have two access points to that public parking, one off the 2400 and one off the new UDOT road that comes into the parking area. Here's our building with the administration, the vehicle maintenance and the chemical storage. We also have a bulk storage for sand and et cetera. And then over here, we have, since we cut the vehicle maintenance bays down, we have a covered parking area for some of the vehicles. So they're out of the weather. And we also added a small storage building. I think you have, yeah, a pole barn.
I like that one at Public Works.
Because they're currently borrowing a, a metal building now to store most of their items.
Oh, from, from
He's talking about our cemetery shed.
Oh, yes.
Our park maintenance facility.
Sad, sad place.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir.
And then I'm going to go to the landscape plan. Here, we've landscaped the area. We have some trees and shrubs on the south side. We have some trees and shrubs along the front of the building. This is accessed off the sidewalk that runs down and connects into the subdivision to the north and continues on to the south. There's a direct access off that sidewalk that leads into the building here. And this would, you'll, I'll see in a minute, this is the entry And this would, you'll, I'll see in a minute, this is the entry into the building. So here we have the entry into the building and entry vestibule. This part of the building is an administration area where we have a conference room, room for crew leaders, a hallway, assistant check-in, public restroom, storage and printer, and then the assistant director and the parks director. That's all the front of the admin, admin building. Then we go to the back of the building where we have the locker room, shower, toilet rooms for four. This is all co-mingle. And a staff toilet room, a janitor's room and a lactation room. On the other side, we have the crew touchdown stations. And then we have a multipurpose room that has a divider. So that'll be used as a break room most of the time. And then that divider can be separated and then they'd move, they use the whole area as the multipurpose room for training. That walks out into the vehicle maintenance bays. We have three vehicle maintenance bays that are pull in, pull out, and then a wash bay to wash the vehicles.
So we have two vehicle bays and then one wash bay.
Yes.
Total three.
And then the chemical storage, we have a utility room that'll house the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire department station and furnaces for this area. We also have a sharpening room. Vehicles will pull up. They'll take the blades off the lawn mowers and sharpen them in the sharpening room. And then we have a parts area where they'll be able to access the parts that they'll use for the vehicle maintenance. And then we have a hazardous chemical that the employees will use. They'll usually mix water and then use that chemical in their large containers. This admin building is CMU block. You'll see in the renderings that we have. We had the whole building done in CMU block. But because the cost estimate, we were over budget, we've reduced the, the vehicle maintenance bay and the product storage, chemical storage and utility room. Those are both metal buildings with a metal panel on the exterior of the building. The admin area will be CMU right now. Here are the the covered parking. So it's just posts and a corrugated metal roof where the vehicles will pull in to be out of the weather. And then the bulk storage is just a covered area so the, to keep the sand and, and wood chips from flying around. They're separated. A truck will come in and dump in those areas. Let me go back to the site plan. So that's the vehicle maintenance area covered parking is right here. And then the pole barn metal storage for additional equipment is here. And then back in this corner by, this is the cell tower right here. Right next to that is the bulk storage, just to give you an idea. We have roof. So the vehicle maintenance and the chemical storage are just metal roofs. They'll drain, they'll sheet flow off into gutters. The admin building will have a flat roof with a single ply membrane and that'll drain into roof drains. The ceilings are all exposed ceilings and the vehicle maintenance and chemical storage and just regular two by two or two by four lay and tile ceiling in the admin building. The finishes, it'll all be sealed concrete in the vehicle maintenance and wash area and the chemical storage. All of the back of the house, the locker rooms, the touchdown stations, the training and the breakfast area, I mean, the lunch area, breakout room is all concrete. The corridor is concrete, the hallways concrete. The only thing that is carpeted is the assistant director, the director, the conference room and the employee stations. And then we'll have walk off mat in the entry. Furniture and equipment. We have locker rooms, lockers and benches. We have tables and chairs that'll double as eating tables, but they'll, they may, you'll be able to put the tables away and then just have seating or desk type seating for the training. These touchdown stations are basically like this stand here. An employee will come in, they'll have their laptop or a provided laptop and they'll log in where they've been and what they've done. And then just some simple furniture for the director and the assistant director, a conference room with some chairs. And then these are just modular furniture for the assistant and the crew stations. These are the elevations. They'll show up better when I go to the rendering, but this is the metal buildings, which is the vehicle maintenance. So that's the two vehicle maintenance bays. And this would be the wash bay. This would all be the, the, this is the door that leads into the locker rooms. That's all CMU. And then this is the entry into the building. Again, all of, that's just, this elevation is just the other side. And then sections. We are going to use open web joists because they're having trouble getting some of the steel products, construction products. We're using open web steel joists. And then for the admin building, the metal buildings will be a pre-manufactured metal building with mainframes and pearlins that go from mainframe to mainframe. And then mechanical regular duck work in these, in the admin area. And we have gas radiant fired heat for the wash bay and the vehicle maintenance. So that'll keep that area above freezing. This vehicle, I mean, chemical storage, we're not doing any heating or air conditioning in that, to save costs. The only thing we're going to do is control the chemical storage, the hazardous chemical storage. That all of the other area will just be kept among, above freezing. We also have some energy codes that we, because we're just keeping it above freezing, we'll save some costs there also. And then we have four rooftop units for the admin building. The electrical plan, we just have two by four lights or one by eight lights or two by four in the main area. We have two by twos in the conference room. And we're still working out the IT and computer AV for this area. I'm going to go to the renderings. So this is a rendering looking from the southwest. So here's that parking area. This is the, the chemical storage and in the back here is behind is the vehicle maintenance. So this would be the admin area with the entry. This is the other side of that. And there back in the foreground is the vehicle covered parking. Back here is the vehicle maintenance. This is the door that leads into the locker room. This is the north west corner of the, of the lot. There's the, again, the vehicle maintenance locker room. And this would be the vehicle and product storage. And this is just the other side of that from the southeast corner.
Let me add that that's not what the color or the texture, but we wanted, we wanted. Yeah, I know.
White grass.
But we wanted the council to be able to have input on, you know, what colors and textures you guys would.
We were going to pick some nice colors, but Cresta said that way. You guys can weigh in.
Commenting in the interest of time. There's only a couple of conceptual issues that I have. The first, you mentioned that we're not going to do all asphalt, that we're going to begin with crushed gravel and, and probably upgrade at some point in time. But with that in mind, I'm concerned about putting carpet in the building. As much as I love it for warmth and sound dampening, it serves both those purposes. You're going to track a lot of crud in, if you don't have, if you're constantly in and out of vehicles that are dirty and messy. So my concern is we just replace that carpet too quickly. So there's probably a way to, to do that in the sense that, could we use those replaceable, the maintenance carpets that you roll out and.
Or tiles.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if carpet tiles.
We could do a LVT. That's a vinyl plank tile that we've used a lot rather than the carpet.
I'm just thinking about longevity of the surface. I don't want to replace it every year. Because if we're going to, if you're going to come in from, from dirt and muck on, into your office constantly, you're going to have to just replace that almost every other year. That's a lot of money. So I would recommend that. The other thing conceptually that I'm concerned about is when we look at your vehicle storage. And I'm not quite sure if you want to scroll back to that, if this is going to be a possibility or not. But with your external vehicle storage, number one, there's a big gap in there between the the two buildings there. And I want to make sure that that can be a future use. Because what we've learned from Public Works is that we're, we're constantly growing. We need, we, we will add vehicles as parks grow. We'll have more mowers. We'll have more tractors, backhoes. So I want to make sure that it's expandable. And we're not doing some part of the design that would eliminate or make some of those spaces not usable. And, and I'm not sure that I, I mean, to be fair, I'm not sure that that's a problem. It could be okay right now.
We took that into account when we, when we did this so that the, we've tried to move the building forward as much as possible to still allow two more bays and double the size here and still get traffic in and around the.
No, I'm talking about just your, your parking shape, your surface structures that are all the way to the bottom of your screen.
He's talking about the pole barn and the covered parking.
Back here?
He's saying that, make sure that we have room that if we need to add on.
So that we could extend those to, to each other. And the other thing is, can they be enclosed? Not that, I'm not sure if we can afford that right now, but can they be designed in such a way that in future we can fully enclose them because that just protects our vehicles and protects our investment?
Right.
So, so those are, those are future considerations I want to make sure are designed for.
And I had a few more questions. So I, I was actually going to kind of piggyback onto that. So I'm assuming that the distance between the, the building and the pole barns is primarily because you originally were going to have the expanded chemical storage. Is that still in the plan to add on to that chemical? Cause that's a pretty small chemical storage area.
I mean, yeah, there's a possibility of adding on when we need to, yeah.
And so I think that's why they were provisioning there. So I just want to make, cause if that's not the plan, then yeah, we could definitely move things around a little bit. But if that is the plan, then yeah, just.
Another option we had was to reduce the size of the pole barn and just add on to the, the current size of the chemical so that we could store all the chemicals and everything else in that area rather than out in the pole barn.
And then I agree with the, the covered parking. And this is just me. Tell me about the locker room and showers and everything. What, how can we?
Well, in most cases you have to have, so you have the locker room. When you have a lot of seasonals coming in, they need to be able to put their stuff somewhere.
Okay.
So the lockers are for that. And then when you have, we're in a time now where to have a women's restroom and a men's restroom. So you'd have to have equal on both sides or close to. And this way anybody of any gender can use the four restrooms.
So I guess my question is, where do they do that now? Do we have any of this now?
Very carefully. They use the restroom.
No. And then that's why it's such, it's such a pain, I say, because it's at the community center. And so back in the back, we kind of is, is the parks maintenance. They come in, we use the classroom for them to sit down and have their lunch or they put all of their stuff, you know, they keep it really in their cars and stuff because there's nowhere to put it in the community center. There's no storage for them. They can, they can put it under the front desk so that nobody can get to it, but there's really no place for them to store anything.
And then again, just, I'm just trying to figure out costs, like the showers, do, do we need to provide showers?
I think anytime you're working with chemicals, I think you need to.
No, I, I, I'm okay with there being a wash station.
Well, chemicals and I mean, I, it's just like the same thing with public works or you get really dirty and muddy. And a lot of times like our guys will just get in their cars and just go home. But if they had a place to actually shower and clean off and stuff, they would.
I just want to make sure understood. Does Public Works have a shower as well?
Yeah.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, we weren't mistreating Public Works there.
And we, we, like, like for instance, with mosquito abatement though, we, they require
Yes.
them, after they've worked with chemicals, that they shower and they actually have a laundry service so that they aren't taking any chemicals home.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. So I just want to make sure understood.
Yeah, that, we are supposed to be doing that right now. No, we're not.
Help me understand why we have a separate shower and then a, a bathroom, a shower with a bathroom and then a separate bathroom.
You don't always need a shower.
That one is for like, if people come in, you know, they're not going to want to go back into the shower area.
I've just wondered if there's not more efficient way to provide more than one.
Can, can we put all the bathroom?
I mean, could you put the shower as a, you know, behind a couple of bathrooms? Or I'm just wondering why it doesn't seem efficient to me to set separate walls on opposite ends of the locker room with four bathrooms. It seems like there's a more efficient way that we've seen that.
That's the next where I was going is if we could move toilets and everything into one room. It's maybe small, but running.
Consolidating.
All, yeah, consolidate all of the restrooms. So all the plumbing is centralized in one area.
Typically, in the other facilities that we've done, well, it's just a matter of, of people flow. So we have two shower toilet rooms. These changing rooms are a toilet room, but they can also be used. If somebody doesn't want to take a shower, that they want to change their clothes to go home or when they get there in the morning, they can use these toilet room changing areas, but that's all condensed. If we stick it you know, in one area, then they tend to get a lot of people congregate in front of that by separating them, then it, it's more efficient use of the total space. I just wanted to point out that this staff toilet room is more for people coming in and washing their hands or using the restroom before they go into the break room to have their lunch or something, but so that they don't have to go into the, the locker room to do that. They can use this. Or if someone's in the public restroom up front, the staff can go and use that area also. And then you don't have any of the employees coming into the admin area during a meeting or whatever. They can use this toilet room here, but they can also use these toilet rooms depending on when they take their breaks.
Is there not a kitchenette in the break room?
Yeah, let me pan down.
Yeah. Are you suggesting just to get rid of? Yeah. Are you suggesting just to get rid of the staff?
Right here. So there'll be a fridge, a microwave, sink.
It seems like it would make more sense to me to have a shower changing area and then have a bathroom with multiple stalls.
Yeah.
Because that, the, they seem to be separate functions. You're not doing them together.
There is a move now, though, to accommodate.
Like you, yeah, unisex restrooms.
Right.
Good with any of that.
But also.
Other two.
But you can't, you can't do stalls necessarily in a lot of public buildings anymore. Because you don't know the gender of who's using them, and so having singular bathrooms is the way legally cities are and states are proceeding.
I think what Dave is saying, and sorry to put words in your mouth, Dave, is if we put a toilet and a shower in the same room. If we're now making those exclusively shower rooms, that toilet is now off limits for five or 10 minutes.
While somebody showers.
So either move them, all the toilets in there, and they can't lock the door. Or put the showers in a different room, put all the toilets in a different room, and that way you're not losing the function of the toilet for 10 minutes.
We originally had, I, I think it was three or four or five toilet rooms, one for the men and one for the women. Smaller for the women, like three water closets, but that took up too much room, so we would have had to expand the building size. So this was a way to reduce the building size, but still have the number of water closets and sinks that we needed. What we could do, though, I see what you're saying, is that maybe you would reduce one of these, maybe have three showers on this side, and then you still have the three toilet rooms up, that that you have to remember that you're we had four or five toilet rooms because they're for the men's, and now you're cutting that down to three. So this was a way to get five, and basically they're unisex, so anyone can use them.
We effectively have six toilets, kind of in a same, within two or three paces of each other, but in opposite corners. I think it would make more sense to have that maybe three showers that are slash changing rooms that are unisex. And the same with toilets, so that they're, you know, we're not, that way you can still have your same rooms, but you're not trying to double the appliances everywhere. Because you can't possibly use the shower and the toilet at the same time in this layout, and that doesn't make any sense.
Personally, I'd either either take the showers out of the restrooms or put our restrooms all in the showers, just, there's always a curtain. And I think you can put all the plumbing in that area.
You can't do that. You need to have a lockable space.
That is not true.
I, I, I would disagree.
My work has a shower curtain, and I've never been tempted to peek.
In this day and age.
You might be able to do that if it was all men or all women.
No, no, I, I, I'm not saying that we, we.
Exactly.
I'm saying we still keep separate men and women's restrooms.
You can't now. That's what I'm trying to explain.
But once you go to separate men's and women's restrooms or separate changing shower rooms, then you're reducing the number of people that can occupy those. The way that we have it here, they're basically all unisex. So you have one, two, three, four, five that anyone can use rather than single an amount.
Well, we've, what I'm saying is we have six sets of toilets, six sets of sinks, two sets of showers. I think, you know, and the plumbing is spread out along the corners and edges of the building. I kind of feel like there's a way to condense the plumbing cycle and get more units without spending the money on. Again, the duplicate, why put a toilet where a shower is when you could put a toilet where it could be used by as a toilet at the same time somebody uses a shower?
You know, one of the things I think we need to consider is that we're planning a parks maintenance facility for buildout. Right? We may, we may be able to add on bays.
Yeah.
And we may be able to add on chemical rooms, but we can't add on toilets.
I'm okay keeping a number of toilets, as long as we do them efficiently.
Yeah, it's the fact that you can't use them at the same time.
I agree.
I'm not a toilet expert. Or a shower expert.
I've put in many a bathroom.
But I would, I would say, you know, it should be guided on the utility for the folks that are going to be using it. And so I, I know you've been kind of quiet over there. I know, I mean, as far as staffing patterns go, all that, what, what would make sense to you? Does this layout make sense? I see that the locker room layout, to me, from a flow perspective, makes a lot more sense to have them dispersed across the side. So people don't all congregate on one side or all use all the locker rooms on one side versus dispersing the pattern. And it makes it more functional to me. But I understand from an efficiency standpoint, you know, maybe you're, maybe you're congregating plumbing across different areas, so.
Yeah, I see both. I see both points. But when we did have the restroom separated, men's, women's, it did extend the building. And so this was a way to bring in costs too. Brody, I saw you wanted to say something. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we can, we can probably go back and see if there's a more efficient way that also satisfies the flow of people. Like, we, we care about the efficiency of of the construction. Right? We want to, we want to construct it in the most efficient way possible, but we also want it to function once it is built.
Right.
We can go back and look at this area, see if there's, there's a better way to to do that. And we can take note of that and still move forward. Let's, yeah, and so I think, I think we understand.
Let me, let me bring Lisa into this conversation. You've been kind of quiet. And then Cresta, would you be ready to talk about cost?
Sure. Well, I'm just listening to the whole presentation and, and I, I have nothing to, I, I don't have any area of expertise except to say that we are looking at a future of unisex bathrooms for sure, needing family bathrooms or something that can be locked or closed off. And, and, and I would never suggest that we can have a shower curtain to separate for privacy issues. I think that we were, we're entering a different stage in the world right now, and, and to be proactive is much more. I just think that's smarter to be proactive and say, let's make these unisex, but let's make them lockable spaces. And, and so that's, that's my only thought, but Corinne's right. It's not, we, we can't do shower curtains these days. And you can't separate them into gender anymore because that just opens us up to a lot of issues coming up and down the line.
Thank you, Lisa. Cresta, can you give us some money figures?
Sure. Was there any other, you guys are good with all the other things?
And we'll work.
Just want to make sure. I just want to make sure. Okay, yes, we're going forward. As you guys can see, it's more than what we budgeted. And it was Rick put in there for us that what the cost of construction has gone up over 15%. It's been gone up 15% over the last two years. So with that said, that's why we're at the 3.2 million dollars. There's some things that we've looked in to doing that we could go lower, and you see that there. That would be us taking care of the landscaping, and I'm going to be honest with you, we really don't have the staff or the time to do all of the landscaping. But if that's something that you guys see and and want us to do, then we're, we're willing to do that. There's some other things that I've talked with Robert about that we don't have in here, but the stub road, there's sidewalks on both sides. And he suggested maybe taking off at least the sidewalk on the north side of, of it, and it could even be a little shorter. So there's some little things that we can still tweak a little bit to get that cost down. But that's really what the cost is looking at on a park maintenance facility. And like the mayor was saying, we're looking at trying to build this, not for just the here and now, but for future use. And it's, it talks about the service that we want to provide for our community. And the Parks and Recreation Department has definitely not had a place to be in, in the last several years. And so this would be something that would be really beneficial, and I think would be a great benefit for the city. Do you guys have any questions? We, just so that Dave knows, we did look also into an all metal building. But as you guys know, this is over in, going to be over in by homes. And so unless we change the zone to an industrial, it can't be all metal buildings. But we did get a quote on that, too, if you'd like to know of what it would be if the whole middle metal building.
I actually had one more question. Sorry. And this has to go with durability of the metal building. I notice a lot of times when we're doing metal buildings, we do brick for about six feet or whatever it is, the, the stone. What is the risk of us doing all metal building and 10 years from now, it's less than optimal? I, I just look wise. Usually they do brick for the first six feet because that's the kind of the high impact zone. But I don't want to have happen is with all the neighbors adjacent, we have this beautiful front facade, but the back just, anyone that goes in their backyard, it's just this.
Well, we didn't see a footing plan, but I usually, even in metal buildings, the first 18 to 24 inches is going to be concrete because of, you don't want snow pile to.
I didn't see that when I looked.
We didn't see the footage.
There's elevations in the packet, and it shows brick on part of it, and it shows metal on part of it.
We have concrete aprons around the, the back of the.
But I'm assuming that's a detail that can be forthcoming.
So all of this would be concrete?
It's on page 107.
This will also include, sorry, a fence around a CMU around the side, but on the back, where nobody will see will be a chain link.
So where are we at? And this is obviously stamped preliminary. Where are we in the process of when we can see maybe some revisions? I, I, I mean, I'm not ready to, to say go build tomorrow, but I think that we're on the right.
Well, I think we're, we're going to see this again. I think the motion today would be to send this to the, the planning commission.
Yeah, the, it would send it to the planning commission. Obviously, it would come back to you guys. We do want to try to move this along because, as you guys know, the best time to put out bids is going to be, you know, November, December, January.
But I'd like to see a little bit more. I think that we've talked about a few revisions and you know, we're over budget and we're going to have to figure that out. But I'm concerned about a few things that I'd rather spend a little bit more and have the facility last longer than cut absolutely short because of the last penny. So, so I'm concerned about things like, do we have a footing plan for the metal part? Do we have a, a plan for expansion of the pole barns? Do you know, they can, what are we making sure that we're designing for the future? So that we don't go back and say, had we done this, we could have saved a million dollars tomorrow. I, I would rather spend 100,000 today and save a million tomorrow than worry about getting that last penny out, so.
And also, as you're going through, you know, yeah, same thing. I want to see the, make sure that we are protecting the area that's going to be most likely hit by something. Whether it be a foundation of cement up 24 inches or whatever that is, or also I noticed a lot of times they put in, what are they called? Pollards?
Like, yeah, the ballards.
That's what it is.
In the drawing.
I saw a few, but yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, we're protecting our investment.
Yeah.
Counselor, are you opposed to sending it to the planning commission?
Nope.
That's the motion.
I, I guess, I guess it depends on, I'd like to see some more study on, on this plan, but I'm not against them looking at it in general concept. I just think that some revisions need to be made. I don't want to send it to them now and then ha, and say, okay, now that we saw these five or six revisions of little details, we have to start over and send it to them. So that depends on our process. If meaning that we can't do some little revisions here, or a little bit of study on best use of the, of the money to make sure that we're not missing opportunities to save us money down the road as we go. So if that's, that's where I'm at. If we're, if we're missing that by sending it to planning commission now, then yes, I'm against it. Do I mind them looking at it now? No, not a problem. But I think that we've mentioned a couple of things that should be looked at.
So yeah, what are we sending to the planning commission?
It will come back to us as well.
It's really land use, isn't it? We're just sending it to them for land use.
Okay, then I say that.
And it's okay.
Right.
Yeah, they're reviewing prior to design too. The only reason we sent it to them is because our ordinance says that we send it to them. It's actually not required under state code, just our code says it.
Yeah. Will it have to go to the ARC?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, we've, we've already put it on the ARC agenda, and they've, you know, you'll get a recommendation from them as well.
So it'll be coming back to us, and we can, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and you can take their recommendation, totally amend it or whatever, and then still move forward with yours.
Still.
And you won't, yeah, you won't have to send it back to them.
Sounds like we got, we have some procedure to get through before we can see it again.
It's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, there's also, you know, storage fulfillment, and I want to see lifts in here because we know that if we don't have that, we're wasting half the effort, so.
Right.
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion either to the table or move it forward.
I would like to motion that we authorize. We give the authorization to proceed with submitting parks maintenance facility to the planning commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Corinne. Any further discussion?
Mayor, could I just make one comment?
Yes.
I, I think it's noteworthy to, to state that it's nice to be in the, in the situation where we can actually build this facility without debt. Even if we have to, to increase the budget, in her memo, Cresta showed you that, you know, where that money can come from. And that this thing can be built without issuing any debt.
That's a wonderful.
It's perfect. Thank you, Brody, for bringing that up.
Give a motion to send it to the planning commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Cassie, Noah, are you?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks for your presentation.
Welcome back, Noah.
Okay, town center overlay ordinance. Let me share my screen. So since last time, last time we talked with Maverick. And I heard that you wanted me to find a way to we still, I heard we still wanted to amend the town center overlay zone. But we wanted to figure out a way to work Maverick into the, into the picture. So I've been working with them, I see him in the audience here, to try to work out a good compromise. No, of course, we've been talking about ways to make the town center a really nice place for pedestrians and provide that kind of Main Street feel. And so what you see in front of us is, is the attempt to do that. I will say that since the packet was published, there's some more discussion between us and Maverick, and so I'll, I'll go over that as well as the changes from what the last time you saw in the packet. But in the blue text is what, what has changed since what was in the packet. But so basically, we're writing in a circumstance that a deeper setback of a principal structure would be allowed in the town center. Because the, the majority of the times, we do want the, the buildings to be built closer to the road. But we say, or the what the new text says is a deeper setback of the principal structure may be allowed in rare circumstances, only if objects or structures are built within the standard setback, creating the effect of an enclosed street wall that the principal structure would have created. And acceptable objects and structures to qualify for a deeper setback include canopies, trellis, architectural screens, columns, and or pedestrian lighting. And objects such as walls and benches alone aren't enough. Then it has to be along the, at least 50% of the fringe of the property. And if they do have some sort of canopy or structure within there, they still have to put the brick, rock and stone and the, the height and roofline requirements of the ordinance. And, but the, in urban design, the street corners are really important to be solidified in there. So we, we just said, street corners, you can't put the, the building way back. The other items related to the, the sidewalk. We had, I had put in there that you have, have to have a sidewalk that goes back to the front door and have landscaping on both sides. But that create a little bit of problem with their particular site. And so we still want the sidewalk, but rather than having to specify two feet on each side. It, it just says that when you're crossing a large expanse of concrete, then every 50 to 70 feet, you have to have some sort of refuge. And so so it breaks it up. And you see that a lot in parking lots that are well designed. You'll have these kind of areas where there's little landscape islands in, in the parking lot. The other, the other thing that they asked for some clarification on is, is the the electronic message signs or centers. The LED signs, we said before that we want that the, we want the brightness to be able to be adjusted down to prevent glare and all that stuff. And they basically asked, what does that mean? And so I did some research and found some kind of standard recommendations that a lot of cities use as far as using a, apparently there's, there's a, a, a light a tool that you can measure the foot candles of light. There's even apps on your phone that you can do it. Or there's a specific instrument. And so they've, somebody out there's done the research. Or there's a specific instrument. And so they've, somebody out there's done the research. So we inserted that in there. So we, we think that we've, we've reached an acceptable uh compromise and, and it's a, we, without having to alter the path that we were on too much. So, you know, if we have any questions or, about this, um, let's talk about it.
So, the primary concern that I heard come forward with building positioning was related to the land owner's desire to not inhibit visual towards their own business. And I don't see that really addressed here. I mean, maybe in a roundabout way, but if the primary concern is can we allow a building on an adjacent pro- or adjacent property without inhibiting the visual reference to another business, then why didn't we just address that question instead of trying to talk about where we're going to put a setback or a trellis or a park bench or, you know, I mean, really, that's just the question. We have somebody who doesn't want to be, have their business visibility blocked. And that's going to happen again. That's, that's the question that's going to repeat.
That, that's a really good question. That would be good for debate with you guys. Um, you know, every, every time a private business doesn't want somebody to block their sign for five hundred yards down the street, are we going to require that every building be set back? Just to, so they can see their sign? I, I think.
I'm not suggesting that. In this case, the land owner could prevent that land from being developed because they don't want that to happen. So we have to accept, they're accepting in this case, that if the building next to them doesn't develop in such a way that it prevents their business visual, then uh, they would be okay letting that land to be developed. That could happen again. And it could happen again in our city center where the next door neighbor is saying, I control this land. But what I'm trying to control is my ability to prosper as a business too. And, and if they are happy to have neighbors as long as they comply, then we're gonna, we could have to deal with that issue.
Yeah. So this, this creates a scenario, if you do see that repeating, where they could set the building back further. Um, as long as they still have a good uh pedestrian treatment for safety. All of those items listed are, are related to slowing traffic or peda- or, or protecting pedestrians. So I, I, I think that the, the problem was addressed. Um, in this particular site, I think it works for the proposed use. And if there were another circumstance where this came up, they would be able to uh use this circumstance as long as they build it. Um, but if you guys had a different idea, we could certainly consider a different way of going about it regulatorily, regit- twirlly. Is that a word?
Let's, let's let Lisa lead us out here, would you, Lisa?
Well, uh, thanks for all the work on this, Noah. I appreciate that, especially figuring out the lumens and, and foot lights. And anyway, that's, that's important. I, I do have to wonder though, that really is a good question. Why is, why was there a business allowed to, I mean, was this a personal?
Yeah, that's just because they own it.
Yes.
They own the property. I'm just wondering, they, that could have impeded the city and it can end up with an area being blighted just because they own it. But I guess, I, I don't know. Does, is that something we can ever step in and, and thwart? Because it, that could have turned out poorly for us.
If they didn't own the land, there would, none of this would be an issue. But because they own the land, they have a say. They could just say, I won't sell.
Yeah, there's landowner rights. The city is not going to force anybody to develop. You know, a lot of times people ask, why did the city do that? It's like, well, we didn't know it.
We didn't. Yeah.
We, we, we set the rules for if development is going to happen, how, what's the best way for our health, safety, welfare, for economic development, pedestrian safety, property values, all those things. We, we, you know, I don't necessarily like this term, but we essentially build a mousetrap. And we, we build how we want it to end up. And sometimes when things go through the system, you know, it's really hard to regulate design and sometimes things pop out the other end of the system in a way that we really liked the project. But, so I guess short answer is, I don't know if you're asking me particularly, Lisa, but is, is, yeah, there, if they didn't want to sell and they didn't want to develop, you know, that, I don't think the city is going to necessarily force their, with blight like that, there's economic development tools we have available that we can encourage them to redevelop or things like that.
Well, one of the things we probably need to keep, to keep in mind is that the Maverick has been negotiating with uh CBS and they're, they're in agreement with CBS. So they're willing to build according to that line of sight.
Yeah, okay. Well, someone else, yeah, I, I appreciate all the work that's been done on this to make something feasible for us and to, to keep high standards. And I think it's just a really important uh c- commercial building for us.
Thank you, Lisa. Jordan?
All right. So a couple of things I wanted to address, just to make sure I understand, uh, uh, item three C, maintain transparency into the interior of the building. This is from the street facing. So what if they are going to have their primary door in the back? What, what, what does this maintain transparency mean? Because right now, um, I, I was just looking at this.
It says that has to be storefront.
Uh, right now we have a long antelope. Again, I'm referencing.
Yeah.
Um, one of the areas and, and their front door is facing their parking lot. Because that's where people, people like to walk from a parking lot into a store and not walk around the building. So if their front door is going to be the parking lot, which is by this code required to be in the back, are we making them walk around? We're not making them walk around to, to enter that. So right now we have a location along antelope that has beautiful transparency into a storage room. And so I'm just questioning the wisdom of that specific line item.
Yeah, we, we've talked about the, in particular, the, the building that we looked at in, in street view. And the urban design conundrum of historically main street, you would have parallel parking and a big, nice white sidewalk and.
Which we don't.
You know, which we don't, but it's, it's Mayberry, but there's, there's a lot of uh wisdom in pedestrian safety with bringing those buildings close to the front. And it creates, when you have things that are interesting on, that face the actual street, like we're talking about the friction and the traffic calming effects of that and as well as um, the pedestrian activity. So that's, that's why we're, we're doing that. But obviously nowadays, everybody drives. Not everybody, but most people drive. And so you have a parking lot in the rear that is essentially the main door. And then you have kind of like, the, the eye candy, the eye candy along the street that adds interest.
Do you want a Macy's storefront there?
Well, and, and some of the, like in a, like the main streets that you go to nowadays that were actually around through all of this transition to auto dependency, you actually see a, a functioning front door. And you see a parking lot and a back door that goes into, so you actually have both. But in here, we're, I think we're, we're creating a compromise, recognizing that we're in the suburbs, that that door that faces the road is probably the secondary door. Um, and so we're saying, within that facade, you have to have.
Some area.
You have to, you have to give a little bit of a, a nod to, to that transparency. I'm not saying that
Well.
Every unit even has, it just says that it, that you'd have to have in the composition of that facade that faces the street, you have to have an operable door and kind of a storefront look. Um, so basically we're trying to describe what we already have in our town center. We like.
I thought we, yeah, because last time we were talking about whether it's uh a open during business hours front door and we changed it to operable door.
Right.
And that's why.
Yeah, we took that off.
I'm just questioning if, as long as, as long as we're not saying transparency is a big glass window and it could be a little window for a, you know, a door window that goes into the store.
And along, I would say, follow along with that is in section five, where it's talking about the windows and the overlay shall not be covered by signs or wrapping with vinyl or other signage material. I don't know. It's in my packet.
Yeah, no, I think we did discuss that last time.
So, but like, for instance, you've got like T-Mobile, they do a wrap and, but part of that's also for their security for products that they store in that back storage room. So.
So I thought we got rid of that and that's still here.
Yeah, I might, I might have missed that. It says excluding standard window covering such as, I mean, it's just basically saying that they don't want the whole thing to become a billboard.
Okay.
But if we're okay with that, we can delete that. I, maybe I missed that.
Right now, this would make all of the people that are already in the town center, they would be out of compliance.
Right. And then, but when you break down the specifics, when it says other signage material, for instance, like even Thai Jasmine can put up their sale or, you know, luncheon special, blah, 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 they stick in their window every once in a while or so. So if there's all signage materials excluded, I don't know if that's, you know, reasonable.
It just says shall not be covered. So like a sign saying that you have a special, that's okay.
I just want to make sure we're not forcing.
Okay.
You can't have anything here.
Well, when it says overlay shall not be covered by signs, by wrapping with vinyl or other signage material. So it's kind of broad. So.
Like when they turn it to a billboard, I think that's what we're trying.
Right. But I'm also saying that that could be interpreted as a poster board too. I don't know. Anyway, and then on.
Maybe there's some work there.
For, just to clarify please for me, of off-premise signage shall not be allowed. What are you, what are you saying on that one? I mean, because we have like our, our conglomerate signs where we have everybody in that unit there or they have their own signage. What?
Billboards. A lot of, like a lot of times you'll see a business that's down the street and then on the corner, they have a big, huge sign, big board, big billboard. So that's very, you know, the whole on the I fifteen thing that we've been talking about.
Okay. So they can either be in the, the complex signage with other units. And that's not technically on their site. But, but then it still translates, that's okay, is what, I'm just making sure.
I'm on what she's saying. Right now on our clock tower, we have Wendy's.
Walmart.
Technically, this would make that.
Subway or whatever. Yeah. It's so, it's just kind of like, unless if, if there's a comment, it's unless it's with a,
Yeah.
Call it multi-tenant signage.
You'd be arguing what a, what on-premise means.
Right. I was just making sure we're not like too broad interpretation. You know, generations from now, they'll be like, hey.
Yeah, my, I think the goal here is not to alienate all the existing businesses. The goal is to have a good high standard for our town center.
Great.
And, and like I said, we're, we're trying to.
We're trying to say no billboards. Let's just say no billboard and allow for off-premise signage as long as it's, you know, like I said, in the clock tower, it's okay for.
Still with. Multi-tenant, multi-tenant signage.
Yeah, because, because yeah, right now we just need to make sure we understand what no off-site means.
If I can, if I can chime in, I mean, I think the reason we use off-site is because that's used interchangeably as billboards at the state with the legislature. So on the, the Walmart signs, that is on-premise because that's part of the commercial complex.
Yeah.
Where they're advertising tenants.
That's on-site.
It provides some protection.
So off-site means, yeah, an off-premise means you're advertising for something that is not associated with the location at all.
Okay. It's like, like an R.C. Willie sign saying one mile that way kind of thing. Okay. Which we no longer have. Well, I'm just saying that is in perfect offsites.
Who, who hasn't had a chance to comment?
I never finished my comment.
All right.
So one thing, as I was reading through this, because I know you love the fizz sign.
Me too.
It's nice.
As I read this, would the fizz signs be allowed in this ordinance? Just read through it. I don't think it would.
That's.
Yeah, it says it can't exceed ten percent of any side. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what ten percent of that building is right now.
Think that's ten percent. It's like, what?
I'd have to get back to you on that one.
Yeah.
But I think, I think yes, that would be allowed.
Or like hanging a, what do you call it?
Because something I was reading through, and I can't remember what it was. I was hoping I could just say that. You'd be like, oh, well, obviously, yes. Do it work? Because be limited to one per building size. That would be considered electronic message sign.
Do they have one in the, a different sign in the front though, in addition to that one that's hanging off the side?
I, I know it doesn't have adjustable brightness. So I'm, I mean.
Just wondering on that one per site.
I don't know. That's what I'm wondering. Because I just, I, I.
The, the fizz is not a electronic message.
On a marquee. It's just a.
Okay.
We're talking about attached building sign, signage, and that one just says that shall not exceed ten percent of any side of any structure's facade. So without doing the math, I don't know exactly, but I would, my guess is that it's not over ten percent of that facade.
Yeah, it's pretty small.
So, this ordinance, we are nitpicking and we are getting, and this ordinance has been, has grown to the point that it is enormous. If we really want business in the city, this is our problem. Our problem is we have made it so difficult that you have to really want to be here to put up with going through all of these kind of word for word nitpicks just to even come into the city. I, I frankly think that if we don't simplify ordinances like this, we are hurting ourselves economically.
So the, but that ordinance wasn't in place prior and you have not had, I mean, we have not had businesses in the past. So, so I, without the existence of this ordinance, it didn't.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. Um.
The city has grown and there's interest, but this kind of thing is we're, we're just putting people through the wringer on every last detail.
That's certainly not the intent. And like we said last time, uh, we want to be business friendly. We want economic development. I would argue that if you were to compare this with every other city's ordinances, this is not any longer than what they have. So we're trying to find a balance between quality and business. So we're, if you guys think that that gauge is too far and requiring high quality development, what we, what we thought we heard with, with our general planning efforts and is that if, that we're not necessarily, we're not a no growth city, but if growth is going to happen, it should be of high quality. So, so that's up to you guys. If you want to move that gauge back. And if you feel that not having any architectural standards means that more business, I think a lot of times the business location is more about the location and less about the architectural standards.
Our neighboring cities have businesses literally on our border, on multiple sides. So if that's the case, it's just too easy for somebody to say, I can just build right outside your city and not have to go through this. I mean, we're literally adding in this ordinance tonight, talking about requiring the business to manage how many foot candles are put out by their sign because it may overwhelm something else.
Also in most city ordinances that it's required to not have a sign that creates traffic problems and glare. I mean, it's a safety thing. It's not like, I don't think that's unreasonable.
I think there's so many other ways to go about it as, I mean, simple size. That's something easy to deal with, uh, just before we have to start. I mean, I would hate to have somebody come and complain and say, I used my phone app and this particular sign puts out too many foot candles. So it's not in compliance. Who wants to check that?
You know, coming, coming at this from perspective of a, of a business person, um, I would like those things laid out for me because then I would know exactly how I have to comply. And I also think that many times we've said, this is when we get it right, right? These ordinances and these, um, all the requirements so that we can have high quality and, and high tax base and, and all of those things, they really matter. And so I, I appreciate the work that's going into the details because this actually in the end saves a business from having to come back over and over and over to find out if they're in compliance because it's laid out so specifically here. So I, I think that it's, it is a quality control thing. And as a business owner, I would want to know what my sign can be and, and if, if something's going to be too difficult for us to address and to take care of and, and um, in, in order to comply. And if it is, then, then we, then we have the ability to address it with counsel and, and anyway, I just think that this is important to, to lay this out. And I'm always going to be first and foremost saying, let's not make it difficult for, for businesses to come. For, for businesses to come here, which is why I hate when we say this much square footage of. Uh, office space has to come with this development because. Those are things you, you can't control if somebody can get the funding to get that office space. That's the, if we build it, they will come. Well, not necessarily. What we're trying to do is make these spaces viable for the businesses instead of saying. Well, we need two thousand square feet. We need to say, well, let's make sure their ground level so that people can actually utilize them. So. I'm always going to be first and foremost, get, get businesses in here, but along the, along the way. And in these precursor stages, we need to make sure that we lay out what, what we're asking them to, to, to bring to the table.
I do also want to add with that, that I've spoken with. Sheldon Peck recently, and when he was building his office building, he said that he had to put in quite a bit more money. For, you know, his all brick facade. And he hopes that we do have a good standard so that he's not the only nice building on the block. Other businesses around him to be nice as well. So there is definitely a balance of making sure businesses can. Do it and, but also maintaining a standard that we want.
We've actually already, I mean, since I've talked to Sheldon about it too, and our standards have been relaxed quite a bit. Since those times, our, our city at one time was a lot more strict. Um, and like the pictures and the things that we've talked about in our economic development plans about creating a charming place that people want to visit. And something that we're proud of. I mean, I like to think that the businesses will, and sometimes they do, they'll, they'll do it on their own, but a lot of times it's because of these standards that. I mean, that, that is the direct result, that built environment or is a direct result is because the city made them do it a certain way.
On, on that note, I, I do, I, I've seen even in our city where some of the businesses have done things in such a way. That made it really difficult for them to maintain in the future. I think this creates actually a fairly low maintenance approach. So I, I'm okay with this as it's written, simply because I don't think it's overly restrictive. It is. Let us know, but I, I do think there are, um, some, some good parts to preserving. Uh, pedestrian safe area and making it look nice. So while I agree with you, Dave, we need to make sure we're not, uh, overly. Uh, restrictive. I don't think this is it. I, I do like to hear the fact that we've, we've been able to work with a lot of these businesses. And we're less restricted than we used to be. We're going to have some huge opportunities coming up shortly. And I think this is a, a good, good step in the right direction to try and keep our town center. Uh, looking nice. And I, there's a couple of other things that we're working on to try and work through weed issues that we've seen in the community. And lots of stuff to, to try and make sure that we can really be proud.
Block tower. Jordan, do you feel good enough about that? You could make a motion.
Well, I, I still think we, uh, need some work on some of the, the vinyl wrapping and things like that. I can make a motion and say, we still need to do some work, or we can table it yet again.
What do you?
I, I would like to hear the council's thoughts on that. I don't really know how that works by, by saying, let's, you know, approve it with. An idea that. But I want you to rewrite parts of it.
Yeah, I don't know if that even works for you, Noah. You could strike it as part of your motion, or you could, we, you know, I don't, I don't think we should wordsmith something right now, but.
Was that the only ones that we were, I mean, once I got a definition of offsite, was that the only place where we were?
Offsite, there was the transparency in the interior of the building as long as we're not requiring. Again, the, the transparency into the building and the, uh, wraps appear to be highly related.
Yeah.
Um, and so it looks like you're just trying to make it so they can't put stuff on the street that looks like a billboard. Uh, why don't, I wanted to say that instead of trying to do it kind of sneakily.
Well.
Yeah, we could just strike three, C, and five.
Perfect.
And just say that your advertisement can't take up. Yeah, more than ten percent of the building. And at that point, they could put in blinds, they could put whatever else. If we're trying to avoid billboards, which again, I'm not, I, I don't think, um, Thai Jasmine and such, I, I don't think their billboards are offensive.
No, it's mostly pictures of their food. Yeah.
Um, so actually I, I'm just going to say, strike it.
Okay.
Three C and five.
C and five.
Yep, strike three C and five. Um, and I, with that adjustment, I'm okay, uh, motioning to approve.
Do we all agree with striking those two?
Sure. I mean, the good news is that whatever we do tonight, if somebody makes a new application, we'll do it again next month. So.
Okay.
This has changed so frequently that I don't know how solid we are on this.
And I agree with you, but we need to move this forward.
Okay, I'll second.
We have a motion by Jordan. We have a second by Corinne. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, ladies. Okay, we're still with Noah. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven. Swimming pools.
Eight to six feet. Any questions?
Motion approved.
I have a motion from Jordan to approve it. I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That one's unanimous, Cassie. Okay, Dave, this is the sewer district, and let me take this one. Uh. Uh, Dave asked for a letter of support from the, from the council on the, uh. Sewer district using ARPAPHONS for a project that, for a grant that they have, which would not be, would not be in competition with us at all. It would come directly from the state. And I have a letter here that needs to be sent to them immediately. Is it's due tomorrow.
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 Go in with her.
Is there anybody in objection? You've seen the letter. You have any objection to me signing and sending it on?
No.
Need a motion?
I was hoping that we would all sign it just because we're the host city and in the application it does.
That was, that was my only question was.
In the application, it just says that, um, you know, how does the host city of the plant feel? So. I, I was hoping that others have not. We have some mayors, some city managers have signed these. Uh, I was just kind of hoping that we showed a strong support as the host city.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Motion to.
If not, we can submit whatever.
Do you want, do you all want to sign it?
The only, the only issue Lisa may not be, I'm, I plan on scanning and send it over tonight.
Oh, yeah.
So Lisa's not here. That's going to be tough.
But, uh, other than that, you know, I, I don't know how she feels about that, but I just want to let, make you aware.
Can we do an in lieu? Can somebody sign in my behalf? I, I hate to have him say, why did, why did council member refuse?
That's okay.
You could do an electronic signature. We, we, that's, we do it in legal forms all the time. So if, if you'd like us to fix a printed. We print your name with a little slash S in front of it and then.
Great.
That's acceptable too legally.
Uh, Brody, could you redraw this then so we can all sign it? Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's move on. Uh, sewer district.
Do we need a motion for that support?
Yes.
Motion to support then.
Okay, you do a second.
Second.
Second by Lisa. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I wasn't sure what the.
Yeah, whatever. Okay.
It's an important one.
Counsel, this last one is also me. I would like, last time we did a general plan, we only put it in, in the October, uh, copy of the Connection Magazine. I would like to put that in the Connection Magazine. I want to thank those of you, Dave and Jordan, for getting more people involved in the city. There seems to be more people coming forward to want to be part of the city. So I would like to extend. Uh, that, uh, uh, request for application to work with the general plan. Uh, November, December, January and February, so that we have four months of people opportunity for them to. To sign up and want to be part of that, uh, so that we can rework the general plan in the spring. Is there any problem with that?
I, I feel like we just barely did the general plan like a year ago. So I'm actually, I don't feel like we're in need of a refresh just yet. I guess that, that's my thoughts.
Been three and a half years.
So by the time we arrange it, it will be four.
Past it.
It's been three and a half years.
Well, and even in the memo, it says that we should visit this every four to five years. And it hasn't been four years, but I'm not against revisiting this. I just kind of feel like. If we're going to do this, it probably, it's not going to get done right now. Um, I think the timing is a little suspect. I think if we're going to visit this next year, it should probably. Start next year.
That's, I think the proposal is to be next.
To start advertising next.
Well, but we start advertising now so that it's in place to hit the ground. The reason why I think this is timely is because we need to start planning for the on-off ramp sections for West Davis corridor. And that has, uh, some of it has been, but I think it needs to be fine tuned because there's been some.
The last, the last time this was done, the record of decision hadn't even been given. So, you know, we've got a lot of planning to do around those.
We do, and I think that this needs to be done, and I think that we need to involve as many people as possible. But quite frankly, to be honest, I think the timing of this is just a political stunt. To do this right before an election and with the opportunity to make promises of who might be a participant in this. I think it's shameful. I think that we should do this after all that's said and done. And, uh, talk about how we're going to move forward with, after that's settled.
Um, how is advertising for, for plan shameful? For participation from the public? You're working with whatever mayor is in place or whatever council's in place at that time.
It was an urgent issue for, to have this done that we didn't get done. Until at least two years into the term. And, uh, so to say that the public would like something different. Which I believe they do and they deserve something different. But to ask for it right before an election is just a plea to say. Oh, look, I hear you, which is great. I hear you too. And I think that this needs to change. But I don't think that we need to be. I, I think that this is just a.
So you're saying you don't want to visit this at all in. I mean, as far as advertising.
I don't think that it matters if we do this one month later after this is all settled.
I don't understand the shame in any of this.
So, so I, I'm just going to jump in here because I, I, I. I don't think there's ulterior motives here. Um, but I, I, my, my reasoning for, for pushing back a little bit on this is, is actually much different. It's simply because. I just want to see the general plan stay stable for a little bit longer. Um, I, we, we, we had an idea where the off ramps would be at the last. Last time we did this, I think we planned for that. We had a whole study around, um, the nodes of the city and things like that. So. Um, again, I, I don't, I, I don't want to make any accusations because I don't think there's ulterior motives. But for me, it's just entirely, I, I think we need to leave the general plan alone just a little bit longer until. Um, maybe we actually get finalized plans for our off ramps and things like that. I, I think we are a little premature. Um, so I, I'd actually like to wait a little bit longer on this just to let the dust settle a little bit.
Hey Seth.
Yeah. So I think when, when we were kind of talking about feedback originally, my, my thoughts were, yeah, three years seems a little early. Um, again, I echo that I have no feeling that it's, has ulterior motives or anything, because I think we could just as easily accomplish. This same thing this next year and say, start November. I mean, you know, start advertising November, um, and push for spring still. But I do feel like give the plan a little bit more time, uh, being that right before I was elected was. The approval of the general plan. So, you know, I'm.
Two years ago, right?
Yeah.
Uh, just two years.
Lisa.
Yeah, I, I, um, I don't agree that, that increasing the amount of time in order to get. More citizen input is in any way shameful or. Or political. I think that anytime we can increase. The, uh, citizen input and, and get some feedback that maybe we wouldn't have had otherwise is a benefit to our city. And, and oftentimes we're, we're waiting until a decision is being made and there's a knee jerk reaction. Rather than doing it preventatively or doing, getting the input beforehand. So. I think it would be a great idea to do a longer term of. Applications or letting people know that we'd like them to be a part of the general plan. And I don't think that there's a, an issue with doing it in the, at the beginning of next year, no matter who the council is or the mayor is. It, it shouldn't matter. What we're talking about at this point is, is increasing citizen input. So it, it, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all.
Dave, would you be happy if we didn't, if we began in November?
Yeah, I'd be fully supportive.
All right. Then can I have permission to begin in November for four months?
What concerns me about this more than anything is that every time the general plan has been revisited, it has been a different process. And I think that's reflective of what's been agreed to by the current, uh, council. We're going to have a different council. So I think that they should have a say in how we're going to go about this because. That's always been different. So.
So why don't we then say, start November, push for April, May?
I, I think that, I think when we know who that, that body is, they should talk about what that format should look like. And how they want to go forward and, and govern that way.
Let's do this, Brody. Let's put this for a discussion item on our strategic planning meeting in November, after we know. Uh, what the election results have been. And I think our intent was to involve all of those people. Who would be coming on the council and those that are leaving. Okay, all right, I withdraw the request. Okay, we're at item number sixteen, a public comment. Uh, if there's anybody who would like to address the council, we'd welcome you to come if our discussion tonight stimulated thought and something.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Uh, my name is Garrett Davis. I've lived in Syracuse for about ten years. Um, yeah, the very brief comment I want to say is thank you for all of your service. Uh, it's not an easy job. So this is an opportunity, uh, I've got my daughter here just helping her learn the process. Um. I, I did submit a comment about four fifty-five before you guys started. I don't know if it went through, uh, soon enough, but. It was regarding the arena and a lot of the comment, if you have an opportunity to read it, uh, I think it's already been said earlier. So. Really appreciate, uh, everybody's support in, um, continuing to, as the community grows. Um, support all of the different things that help, uh, that community, uh, build its character. And, uh, our, our youth to continue to, to, to grow in the experiences they have, whether that be, um. Uh, riding horses, whether that be, um, just, just having positive experiences and, and places to go. That, uh, help them want to be able to, you know, grow up and have their grandkids come visit them here. Uh, because it's such a great place. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate that. Anyone else here in chambers? Anybody on Zoom? James? Alrighty, let's go to mayor and council, uh, announcements. Seth, let's start with you and go across the board.
Yeah, can, can you, uh, give me one second? Let me just pull up. Would you come back?
Dave, you have something?
Why don't you start at the other end?
Sorry, I got, I wasn't ready.
Give him. I thought I was giving orders.
All right, you go ahead.
Um, first of all, just want to say thank you to CTC. And Illumination, that was an amazing event.
That was impressive fireworks show.
Wasn't it? It was awesome. So a lot of hard work, really great messaging. Super grateful for, um. Sarah Frye and, um, James Violet for performing and speaking and. Uh, all of the youth that were involved there. We definitely hit our target group. Of teenagers in promoting good mental health and what you can do to celebrate life. And deal with the bad things that happen along the way. So if you're able to go to those booths or participate in some of the online events, they were amazing. And, and so great with Davis Behavioral Health. They are a real asset to our community. And we are already planning for next year. So put it on your calendar, let your neighbors know. We had less compliances this year, yay, about the fireworks than last, but. About September first, which by the way, is suicide awareness month. That's why we're coinciding it with, with that. Um, and then also wanted to just say, museum had their first demonstration today from three to six P M. And it's going to be tomorrow and Thursday, knife making with their working forge. Which is awesome. Okay. which is awesome. Okay. And then on Thursday, same thing. The hours are a little bit odd for people who work regular jobs. I don't know why it ended up 3:00 to 6:00, but they have certified instructors, forging instructors coming. So today and tomorrow, we're going to be knife making. And then Thursday is general forging. So, and then, and if you bring your kids, they're, they are bringing, making little rings out of like nails and stuff. So super cool what the museum is doing. And they're doing a lot of great things for their fundraising and starting to get more items for sale in their, their little area with buttons and shirts and hats and promoting the museum. And it's starting to show in their budget. Yay, because they used to be on a shoestring. So they're doing a lot better, especially with the Harvest Hosts.
They get mosquito suckers.
Mosquito suckers? I don't know what that is.
Sucker with an insect inside?
No.
They're awesome.
Okay, you'll have to show me some. I, I, I don't know. I like the guns where you can shoot the salt and kill the bugs. Bug assaults, those are awesome. So anyway, um, so those two things, and I will be getting out the mosquito abatement, speaking mosquitoes report here shortly. They are coming along with their negotiations with Ogden Airport for re-upping their 15-year lease plus two years in order for us to pay for the tarmac, which is not in the lease. Anyway, we're just trying to push that we can get all 17 years in. It's coming. It's taking forever. They're doing great.
Lisa? Lisa?
Yeah, I just want to ditto everything that Corinne said about Illumination. We just had a fantastic showing and, and our youth from Syracuse did nutrition and mental wellness. And they had a drying for a blender for, to make smoothies and, and anyway, we just had a great turnout and, and fantastic comments from all of the surrounding areas. Everybody just loved it. So we expect it to get bigger and better every year. And we had a lot of youth groups that used it for their weekly activity. And we'd love to see more of that. So and I've just done some Zoom meetings with the CTC and with our youth group. We had another, another youth who wants to join. And so anyway, we're just growing and we're continuing to expand our youth commission and we're grateful for the kids who, who want to be involved. And that's it.
Thank you, Lisa. I want to thank both you and Corinne for your work with CTC. That, I know that you give a lot of hours weekly to that group and the rest of us don't see all the time that you give. So thank you. Jordan?
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that as well. My family watched a few of the, the classes, firework. I mean, great job. I, I'm glad that we can be a good supporter of that and, and hopefully we can continue that support in the future. I also wanted to just quickly report on the disaster preparedness committee. And we were working on the, the mock disaster for next year for, in conjunction with the Great American Shakeout. We'll have more information on that. But the sad news is due to the increase in coronavirus numbers, we have decided in, with the police chief or fire chief, sorry, to cancel the CERT class for the second year in a row. And also the fire open house has been canceled along with that. So very sad about that. But it, it was the right move to try and keep people safe. Along with that, on that same note as what may be the last activity that, that we had with the public safety, police, I did want to say kudos to your night out against crime. I think the kids had a, a great time. My, my kids loved it. It was fun to watch our, our former, unfortunately, Derek Cop get dunked. Officer Penrod, and we're gonna miss him as well. And then, yeah, just great job and congratulations for a great event. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, Dave? So a couple of things. First, shout out to the Illumination event. I heard it went really well. I'm sorry I had to miss it. Work sent me out of town that day, but I heard very good things and, and that's wonderful. Shout out to the police chief and the night out against crime. I had a wonderful time there. Again, it was so glad to be able to do that again. I, I came and passed out suckers again, as I've done a couple of years and sat with some of the officers and talked to people. And you have a great department and great public relations and just thank you for all you do. I'm sad that the fire department won't get to do theirs because I've had the same experience with them and, and you guys are great PR, both of you for our city. I want to say that the Syracuse Arts Council has decided to do a fall concert that they intend to do outdoors because of the current situation. So they're going to perform on October 4th. The plan is to perform at Founder's Park. So this will be an open air concert available to others. They are available to all and the ability to distance because of that. So that's wonderful on the 4th. For that concert, they are looking for a vocal soloist to sing the National Anthem. The, because of the situation here, we're not going to do in-person auditions. Anyone interested needs to submit to the board and the, their arts council is, or the email is online. It's orchestra@syracusearts.org. Submit a videotape of yourself singing in the key of A flat. If you would be interested in being the soloist for that.
I tend to wander through.
That would be, you have to need, do that by the 18th. So that, that audition date is coming up. Jordan, I'm looking forward to your audition tape.
I, I can't guarantee any specific key, but I could definitely sing.
Okay. All right.
I don't, I don't.
There, there might be.
Key throughout the song.
You're saying there might be an A flat in there. Okay. I, I'll take that on a note. So, but that October 4th concert should be interesting. There is also a chance that we will be using a live cannon as a part of that concert outdoor, which is a rare event. So just keep your dates.
Is that an announcement? We're doing the 1812 over.
That, that certainly sounds like it, doesn't it? But I can't make that official because I'm not sure they have the cannon.
Just make sure they don't actually put cannonballs in it, please.
I, I have been appraised that they can do that without. But lastly, I want to talk about sewer board. We had a morning demonstration of pipe joining for the new pipeline that's going on out on the Causeway. The ceremony was not well advertised because of the situation health-wise. The board members and some of the contract leads came, the general purpose besides the ribbon cutting was to witness the pipe joining because this is a new process. This will be the largest and longest pipeline of its kind in the state of Utah when it's finished.
Is that the pipe I saw parked in the Walmart parking lot for a couple of days?
You might have. It's 55 inches wide.
It looked.
It's enormous. For the next several months, you will see trucks coming in. They fit only two per truck. So they're quite large. It is a heat fusion process that takes hours for each section. And so it's not something, I mean, if you really like, you know, events like watching paint dry, I could arrange for a demo, but it is a long process with a lot of weight. Yeah.
Chris, just come up here and tell them what your involvement is there.
I actually come over that part.
Excellent. It was, I mean, I'm thrilled with the work that we've done. The, there is being done out there. It was a beautiful setup for the, the ribbon cutting. That pipeline is going to be amazing and, and help greatly with what's going on. So we're, we're thrilled. And that is something that we can use these funds for, and that's the application. It could relieve a lot of the financial obligation if the state chooses to give us some of that money. The other thing that I want to report on from their perspective is we have seen a massive change in the dynamic of the flow at the plant because of all of the pipelining we've done over the last five years. So a lot of things that were in the past kind of taken and broken up and, and broken down because of the cement pipes, which causes them to last not as long.
That's efficient detail on the, on the breaking down to say, you know.
But I didn't plan on elaborating on that part. But the point is that it's now arriving at the plant in a
You're gonna elaborate, aren't you?
Nope. I'm, it, it's arriving with more work to be done. So we are investing in some stainless steel headwaters pipe research to be able to manage that flow. And we have, over the course of time, used different coated pipes to make the flow go better. And that's again, part of this piping system. But the efficiency that we work with has saved millions of dollars. And so I'm very proud of the people who have been engineers and the workmen who've done this. I don't take no credit myself, but I'm thrilled with what they've done to help us save money. This pipeline, the alternative to this pipeline is hundreds of millions of dollars for other plants. And so we're really thrilled with that change. And that's all I want to report.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Seth?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll be brief. So with the Cook Elementary Community Council, they had a question that came up. It's always kind of around parking and, and just the congestion that occurs back there. But they, they talked specifically about the intersection of, of David and Maryland Drive. And the fact that there's a diagonal cross that, that people or students have to walk diagonal across the traffic. And reporting that it's causing quite a bit of confusion and also safety concerns. And we're wondering what that would mean for us in regards to like a crossing guard or striping or anything that could help. So is there any way we can look into that to see what, maybe if there is a safety issue that we could address?
Yeah, we can, we can look into that. We've, we've looked into it before.
Oh, okay.
But we can report.
Okay.
And, and.
They just, yeah, I, I think letting them know what, what the outcome is would be great to know that.
Yeah, it's an awkward, and it was just the way the subdivisions were developed there. There, there's an awkward line, alignment of the roads right there.
Okay, thank you. And then.
Oh, I don't think that's David, is it? Isn't that Dallas and?
I thought it might have been Dallas as well.
Dallas and Maryland, I think.
David and Maryland. So.
Yeah.
Anyway, either way, that'd be great. And then, yeah, I think just echoing everybody's comments about Illumination and the Night Out Against Crime, they're both great events. And my daughters got to sink, one of the girls, one of the Miss Syracuse, Miss Junior Syracuse. So that was pretty cool. In the dunk tank. That was good to see. And then finally, I just want to thank those who stuck it out to the end here to represent our equine community and the arena. I think I have not on any issue, I'll be honest, I have not gotten that much feedback from the community and a, and a groundswell of support. And so I appreciate it. And really, I, just talking with our fellow council members and mayor, I don't think anybody honestly felt the opposite way, but it was so hard to control information and how it got out. We really do appreciate your support and, and it makes us feel justified that we're making the right choices, you know, and so thank you for.
Well done keeping it civil as well.
Yeah, never.
Did a great job making sure that it was all very straight, civil. And that, that's refreshing. And that's all.
You're good. Okay. I'm going to defer to Brody with something that I think we need to talk about a little bit, and that's about our COVID situation here in the city. We are now the boil on the butt of the Davis County Health Department. We are the hot, we are the high side where COVID is. And we've been discussing, Brody and I, about the possibility of going to an all virtual meeting again, at least for a short period of time, not require, not asking people to come out and be exposed. So Brody, do you want to talk a little bit about that? And then maybe we can help you with the decision?
Sure, yeah. The, so in, in the county, hospitalization rates are up where they were at the peak of last winter already. The infection transmission rates are considered in the high category. Syracuse has the highest infection rates in the county currently of all the cities in, in Davis County. And so, yeah, it, it would be advisable for the council, I think, especially for work sessions where you're in a smaller room to go to all virtual. And I would consider doing all virtual for these meetings as well, just for, you know, when you get a number of people like tonight, sitting close to each other, that can be a, a place of transmission. So.
Anybody disagree with that for maybe six weeks?
No, I, I honestly have been weighing that on my mind quite a bit as I'm asking my kids to make healthy choices. They're asking me at the same time, do you follow those same choices? And, and there's differences there with vaccinations and adults being able to be vaccinated, but I do want to be a standard for them. And so that's where I, I'm at on it.
Dave? I think that there's wisdom in, in setting our next work session as virtual because of the rise. I realize we don't know what the future brings. I guess I'm more comfortable if we were to do it on a meeting by meeting decision instead of a set out a, till this point, because six weeks from now, we don't know what things will look like. And so we may say.
By county transmission rate? We could, we could just say, do it by county transmission rate. Say if we're in the high, then.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make another suggestion. Brody is our ELC manager and he has made calls all through this COVID thing. So I would say I'm fine meeting by meeting, but I think that call ought to come from Brody.
And the way that the, that it works, there's, it's a 30-day expiration date. So if the mayor makes that determination and issues that, you know, that determination, it's a 30-day thing. So it, the law requires you to look at, you know, is this appropriate or not? And, and just because you've issued the determination letter doesn't mean that two weeks later, you couldn't say, actually, if things have changed, we can reach out an in-person meeting. So that's kind of how the, that's how the law works in that.
I agree with that.
You're good.
So setting a.
Lisa, are you good?
Yes, I, I'm one of those COVID transmissions this, today. So yeah, I, I think we're, we've gone into that season again. So whatever we think, I'm happy to let Brody make the decision and, and make the call for us for the next while.
Corinne?
I'm all for that.
All right. Okay, Brody, then will you make that call? And then I'll, I'll be signing at least a 30-day, but we can, but I hear, hear you say is we can preempt that if we need to.
Yeah, yeah, you can always rescind that, that issue or order.
Okay. Counsel, I take a motion to adjourn into a closed session.
So moved.
I have a motion by Dave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, Cassie, can you send Lisa a new link? Okay, and we'll adjourn in, let's take a five-minute recess and we'll reconvene in the, in the.